All right. Everyone, we are reconvening. This is the Ways and Means Committee.
Excuse me?
Everyone, if you can hear me. Hello, hello, hello? All right. Thank you all. We are reconvening the Ways and Means Committee on Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for a Fiscal Year Ending in June 30, 2024. I am the Acting Chair, Councilman Christopher Burnett, the 8th District. We join to my right, Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorary member of the committee? You're a member of the committee?
I'm not a member.
Yeah, honorary member of the committee. You're here all the time. And Councilmember Porter has joined us as well. And we are convening to hear from the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. And if I'd like to get started, I guess we have a presentation. We'll note that there's a little bit of a delay when you click, so just be prepared for that. All right? Thank you, Director Hamowitz.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Great to be here. I'm Dan Hamowitz. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, and glad to be here today to talk about some of the work of our office, as well as some of what is ahead in terms of our budget. All right, so this is not specific to the Office of Performance and Innovation, but did want to start with this context because really increasingly, and you know, City Stat, of course, is a key part of the overall Office of Performance and Innovation, OPI, but increasingly, we think about our wider data, performance, and innovation tools that we have as a city, which are increasingly varied and tailored to different types of challenges. So while OPI is a key part of this, and City Stat a key part of this, there are many components of that overall approach which we, as a city, are now taking. Did want to highlight this, and I know this has been used in other recent presentations, but Baltimore is being recognized as a city that is using data, doing, using data well. What Work Cities is a national organization which conducts a very rigorous assessment across a range of aspects of data usage, everything from data governance to performance management, across a range of factors. And we have earned Silver Status, which is our best-ever rating again. So we are a city that's making progress in terms of our overall data usage, which encompasses a varied number of these, of things. All right, so I'll talk a little bit about the Office of Performance and Innovation itself and the work that we are doing. So there are some subcomponents of the overall office, and I'll start with the performance management parts of the team, which are City Stat and the City Performance Team. So as you can see here on the slide, City Stat is being used today, and the decision has been made in line with, really, best practices, to use City Stat to work on complex issues and in a collaborative fashion across a range of stakeholders. So really coming together as a problem-solving, multi-stakeholder forum. While increasingly, we're looking at the forthcoming agency performance plans and the performance planning process as a really critical mechanism for holding individual agencies accountable for particular services and expectations, targets associated with those services. So just a little bit more on that agency performance planning process, which is a pretty significant new process which is underway now or being developed now. The first wave of agency performance plans will be published later this summer, and these plans will feature metrics and targets across all of the agency's key services. They will be finalized and published, made public, so that everyone will be able to see them. And increasingly, this will be kind of the public articulation of performance expectations across our city government. So 15 agencies to start in later this summer, and then a second wave of 16 agencies in February, but eventually, every agency will be doing this. This process has featured to date an extensive review of the metrics and targets that agencies use. We have heard from the council that the budget measures that are used as part of this process, you know, are useful, but sometimes not, don't always feel like they're the most, you know, pertinent to the work of that agency. And so this process is also about tightening up and strengthening the measures themselves. So this is, again, an extensive process that is underway. So that's the agency performance plans. On this next slide, which I'm pulling up, this is a look at the actual performance management stats and related processes that we are working on today. The ones in yellow are the ones that OPI itself is leading. And then we also included, because it is really important, in gray, a number of the key performance processes that agencies themselves are running, because increasingly, we are thinking and seeing this as a whole-of-government effort towards better use of data and performance management. Don't want to talk about all these stats, though glad to speak to any of them in more detail if they are of interest. Really, really proud today of some of the progress that is being made through these different processes. You will have probably heard about and read about, and the mayor and others have rightly been talking about the progress made in terms of some of the squeegee work that the Squeegee Collaborative has been working on for the past few months. OPI provides data analysis and support to that process and is informing the operations of that collaborative, and really, really just proud to be a part of that process. Police Stat, that's one of our most intensive stat processes. We convene every other week for two hours, led by the mayor. It is a very intensive process through which the mayor and deputy mayor for public safety and others hold the police department's executive command accountable for the implementation of their various violence reduction strategies. This is one of the main mechanisms for accountability that the mayor uses with the police department. Obviously, we are less than halfway through the year, but there is some progress to see this year. Seventeen percent reduction so far in homicides this year compared to last year. It is very early, we recognize this, but this process is a key tool in the city's overall efforts on violence reduction. And then one more before I move on, I'll just highlight a different type of stat process that we operate. We hold a monthly meeting looking at the timeliness of payments of invoices to vendors. We have a dashboard developed by OPI. We come together, involves basically every agency that has any sort of relationship with a vendor in the city, and together, in this collaborative problem-solving forum, look at the data, try to identify common challenges, and work together towards making improvements. And since September, there's been a 72% reduction in the value of late invoices again, not saying that's all due to this process, but certainly supported by the use of data on this problem. So that's a look at some of the data processes connected to performance management. And then wanted to also highlight the Data Fellows Program. This is an initiative through which data analysts who are newer in their careers, sometimes this may be their first data job in fact, are brought into the city in the role of an analyst. They are provided mentorship training, but also allowed to work on a hands-on data challenge with an agency, identified by the agency. And through that year of the fellowship, they are both responsible for the delivery of whatever that data project is, but also what we are most excited about perhaps is just the way in which this program has increasingly become a pathway to other, more senior roles in this government. And we've seen most of these fellows stay on in various roles in the city following their fellowships. An example of a recent project from a fellow who recently concluded her work with us, developing an operations dashboard for EMS, which is used at various levels of that EMS operation. And again, really, an example of just a tangible tool that the fellows work on. And I'll come to the innovation team, which uses a human-centered design approach to innovation. There's lots of different things that people think of when you hear the word innovation. This approach is design-based, and what that means in short is really partnering with residents both on the learning process upfront to deeply understand whatever challenge they are working on, but then using that and then working with residents to co-create solutions as that, you know, that react to some of that learning. And so currently, the team is working on a very timely issue, which is hard-to-fill jobs in the city, starting with mechanics, which of course are both a really important role, important for keeping our city's fleet operational, and an area where there are some, you know, some needs in terms of hiring and retention. So they are sort of at the start of that project. Our hope is that the learning innovations from that work can then be scaled and also applied to other types of hard-to-fill roles in the city. So that's the various parts of the overall OPI office. And now just switch to the budget.
Director, could you go back to the fellows program? Director, I'm sorry, BP Middleton, I know this is an area of interest of yours, and so I thought, I just want to make sure you kind of got the spiel of what they're doing here.
Oh, to just say it again?
Describe it again.
Oh, sure, yeah. So this is a program through which data analysts are hired into the city. They tend to be more newer in their careers, and they are provided mentorship, training, development opportunities as analysts, but also they're working on a tangible data issue with an agency. It's identified by the agency. They are embedded with that agency to work on that data, you know, data issue. So the example I used was this EMS operations dashboard that a recent fellow worked on. That is a tool that the EMS team was really, you know, very much clamoring for, and that she built in collaboration with them and is now very much used by them. The other exciting piece is that we've watched these fellows now move on into other roles throughout the city, other data roles. So it's been a terrific way to kind of, you know, bring in the next generation of data talent into the city.
Thank you. That is some awesome news that took time to work and develop, and that's all we continue to ask is, you know, take time and try to sit down and develop that program. You know, one or two people can do that for the agency, the actual training piece. And, you know, now we're trying to figure out how to connect that directly to our high schools as well, get them early in the 11th and 12th grade, because that's where a lot of the interest lies as well. So we want to capture them to, you know, be a part of what's going on in career-wise in city government. So thank you so much for that great update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
No worries. Do you want to continue?
So I was moving on to just the fiscal picture. This just highlights the different components of the overall OPI. Again, there's City Stat, the Data Fellows Program, the Innovation Team, and the City Performance Team, which is managing this new process I described around the agency performance plans. Each of these parts of the team are funded through the general fund, with the exception of the City Performance Team, which is funded through the American Rescue Plan. So I'll say a little more about the specifics. You can see on this slide the overall sort of mayorality and how that's looked at from a budget perspective. I believe we're Activity 20 in that org chart. And here's a look at the specifics in terms of the budget. The recommended budget for OPI in this forthcoming fiscal year, 1.58 million, which is pretty similar to the number from last year. It would maintain the current level of service, the majority, vast majority of that budget's for staff. And then just to note, as I mentioned, that the City Performance Team, part of OPI, is specifically funded through ARPA, but the rest funded through the general fund. So, yeah, excited to share what, all the things that this office is up to, and will pause there for any questions or thoughts from the council.
I don't have anything for this round, but we can just go to Councilmember Ramos, and we'll go just to the right and bring it back. Councilmember Ramos.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. What is the relationship with Bloomberg? I know that the Bloomberg was part of the beginning of OPI under Mayor Pugh, and so I'm curious, what is the relationship now?
So the original Office of Innovation, which I helped to set up in 2017, that was established in partnership with, through a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies. The Innovation Team, which is now, again, part of the overall OPI, that whole team is now fully under the general fund. So there is no, you know, funding relationship with this Innovation Team and OPI. That said, there is a variety of support that Bloomberg, especially through the centers at Hopkins, including the Center for Public Innovation, the Center for Government Excellence, provide in terms of advice, technical assistance to us. You may be aware that Beth Blower, who oversees both of those centers at Hopkins, is now working with the city to support some of the thinking about the future of our data work. So there is still a lot of support, but the actual, like, funding of that budget, which I just showed, is not from Bloomberg.
So there isn't another, other than through Hopkins, there's no other relationship with Bloomberg Philanthropies? My question is about, well, there's two things. One is, are there times where you, or the city, or somebody would say to Bloomberg Philanthropies, "Hey, can you study this for us?" Or is there a specific ask every once in a while? What's that, what's that relationship?
So, I mean, I can just, again, speak for OPI, and again, they, again, there are these centers which, again, are literally global experts in the very work that the Office of Performance and Innovation does. So we are constantly, you know, interacting, you know, getting advice on best practices and approaches that we use. You know, glad to hear from my colleagues as well about other ways we've worked with them, but there's other areas of, you know, the government that, where support may be provided, but I'm just speaking about OPI. It is, you know, largely sort of technical assistance, advisory work, and on various things that we, you know, request or need to learn about, or would find helpful, and kind of, you know, working with them on.
Gotcha, gotcha. The city administrator wants to add.
Yes, of course. So we actually have a very strong partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies, a part of, I think you've heard me talk about Beth Blower and the work that she does. A part of her being on loan to the city administrator's office is a part of that partnership with Bloomberg. There are a couple of active projects, excuse me, I ran up here. There are a couple of active projects, one of which is the I-Team. We are in active conversations about expanding the I-Team work. They are helping us around the hard-to-hire positions, and they had done some initial work around, I think, police recruitment. They are very much interested in the vacancy work that we are doing, and there are a number of other partnerships that we have with Bloomberg. They're actually going to be here next week.
So is it just through the Beth Blower's office that is happening, or?
No, this is with National Bloomberg. So Jim Anderson is actually the one that I work directly with. We actually have, I think, five to six, five to six open projects with Bloomberg National, and then there's some other work that we are doing with the local Bloomberg through the partnership with Beth and Hopkins.
Can we get a list of those projects?
Sure.
Can we get that as a request, just the list of the projects with Bloomberg Philanthropies?
Yep. And then, I'm not sure if the team already talked about this, but the What Work Cities certification and the Bloomberg Data Alliance that the mayor was just at. So we have a pretty robust and active partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. Of course, I'm a big fan of data and how it has an impact on the city and, of course, performance of the city. Just for edification, how, what are the current number of stats that we're running now?
So seven stats and I count sort of related performance management processes.
Got it, thank you. And then, how are we currently tracking city processes and agency work?
Councilman, can you just say a little more about what, maybe give a few examples of what you mean, because I want to start going...
How are we tracking city processes and agency work? So the work that each of our agencies do day-to-day, that interact with constituents, residents, and otherwise, when they call the city, they have a problem, an agency is tasked with resolving that problem, whether it's a street light out, a road that needs to be paved, a pothole that needs to be filled, errant bill that comes in for water, and so on and so forth. How are we tracking things like that?
Yep. So I, I think there's a bunch of different layers to it, again, and those are varied things. There's obviously the things that we do have stats that we operate around, so that would be a mechanism to look at processes that fit into those stats, for example, a clean stat. As I noted, increasingly, we are looking at the whole of our government's data and performance management, you know, skills and the whole workforce capabilities. And so many agencies themselves have their internal processes to, you know, accountability processes associated with some of the services you've said. And then there's a variety of other management and accountability processes that are just, I would describe as management between, for example, a deputy mayor and the person running that agency, and the processes through which they are interacting. There are a variety of dashboards that are used in those interactions and in other parts of government. So, you know, there's different tools depending on the particular, you know, service. It's not, you know, it's not like a singular mechanism, and...
I'll be, maybe an example helps. I'll go back to an example of complaints about water bills. We, I get questions and concerns about that all the time. Sometimes it's a constituent misunderstanding, sometimes we really made a mistake. Our deputy mayor, of course, is overseeing, I'm not sure which deputy mayor, which deputy mayor oversees DPW water wastewater?
The deputy city administrator.
Okay. So our deputy city administrator would, of course, oversee DPW and make sure that those issues are resolved. Of course, our deputy mayor would care about making sure that these issues are resolved. How would our deputy mayor know if this is a problem?
I'm happy to address that. I think there are a couple of ways. So I think we've talked about this during my hearing and any countless times that we've talked about the different tools and management tools that we have available for our teams. So in that case, one, DPW is tracking water billing issues, and they can tell you that in the past two years that we've seen an over 85% decline in the number of complaints for water bills. We talked a little bit about 3-1-1 and the complaints that come in through 3-1-1, and our chief data officer has already been working on a dashboard around 3-1-1 complaints so that we can see where the trends are. Another interesting kind of data tool that we probably don't talk much about is the Mayor's Office of Constituent Services, where we are actually tracking the number and the types of complaints that come into the city, into the mayor's office, and we're able to determine if there is a trend or an issue that comes up. But a management tool that the deputy city administrator has, she's able to pull data. She's able to look at open data or any number of our dashboards or our data systems and say, "Hey, I'm seeing a spike in water billing issues. Let me, in my management meeting, go in deep with the director and/or if I think that it rises to an enterprise-wide level issue, then let me work with the Office of Performance and Innovation or our chief data officer to go in deeper on that issue."
So I just want to make sure I understand, and please let me know if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, the deputy city administrator would have to go seek out the information? Would either have to ask the director of DPW, or the director of DPW would have to come and tell them, "We have an issue," or they would have to look into the complaints?
So it's a couple of things.
Okay.
One, I think, and I mentioned this in my hearing, about the executive dashboards, right? That would be at the executive level, so it would be for me, it would be for the mayor and/or the senior executive team, which would track a number of these high-flyer issues, right, that we're working with the chief data officer on. That's proactive data reporting that we're looking at daily on a number of issues, right? So that is one tool that we could look at to determine if there is an ongoing issue that we need to dig deeper into or assess. So that is one particular tool. I think when it comes to something like water billing, that is data that, one, lives in the department, right? And there are mechanisms and tools in place for us to get data on a regular basis from the departments and to do regular assessments of some of these key processes, some of the big 3-1-1 requests that are coming in, so that we can do that proactive pull and that proactive look at some of the issues that are going on. So to answer your question, there's a proactive approach via executive dashboards where we will be able to look at some of those issues. And then there is kind of the more reactive management-level approach of, "These are the top management issues that I'm working with the Department of Public Works on. I need, you know, regular syncs and updates about water billing along with any number of other DPW issues."
So want to be clear, City Stat does not do that, is my point.
City Stat does do that. I think, again, so I think my point to you, when we talk about performance, is that City Stat is a tool in a larger performance infrastructure and/or strategy. It is not a performance strategy. And so the way that we use City Stat is a tool. And so there are times where City Stat might uncover something like a water billing issue, but we also have other ways to uncover and, not just uncover, but to fix the water billing issue. And I think that is the bigger topic here, is how do we actually fix these issues in these systems? Because City Stat doesn't do that, but Lean Six Sigma does, right? And some of the process improvement tools that we utilize do actually go in and fix some of these systems.
Maybe, I'm sorry, Justin Alsas chief, I was sorry. One thing to offer. You know, 15 years ago, we didn't have quite the amount of data we have, and part of what our, the administration has really attempted to do is push data talent through the Data Fellows Program, you know, through data trainings like our Data Academy Program, and bringing in experts who really know how to make data-informed decisions, is to push that decision-making further through the organization and that data capacity, so that fixing issues like this, detecting these kinds of basic issues, aren't solely dependent and concentrated in the mayor's office. We want the entire organization to be able to use data and spot these kinds of issues. And so when we talk about, you know, whether or not City Stat is tracking a particular city service, yes, we have multiple ways of doing that, and, but what we really want to be able to do is concentrate, you know, the power of the mayor's office on the more deep, complex issues, and ensure that our city agencies have the tools, the skills they need in order to detect and solve some of these issues themselves.
All right, Bob. I agree with you, we definitely have more data now. I would disagree, however, with the thought that that was all managed by City Stat. It was not managed by City Stat in the past. Agencies had their own stat programs internally, and City Stat existed, and there was a symbiotic relationship between what the agencies were looking at and what City Stat was looking at. So I, I will end it here. I think my point and what I was trying to prove through that line of questioning is there are things that we're not doing or not doing centrally that we're relying on city agencies now to do that historically were handled by City Stat. And I think, that's something I think we need to really think about. You know, this is, you know, a discussion we'll have as a council, and of course, you guys are having as an administration, but I think we're really missing an opportunity for someone to make sure that the trains are running on time, that there's coordination between agencies that are handling issues that go across agencies, from potholes that are actually water main breaks. Those things can be really confusing. They result in the close-means-close issue for which we have still, and we talked about this earlier today, have not resolved. And the question is, how do we know how we're doing? And if we're counting on individual agencies to talk from their silos about how we're doing from the broader perspective, we'll never actually solve these problems.
So I do want you to respond, CL Leach, and then I want to wrap it up as well, for the interest of time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, no, I appreciate that. And again, this is an ongoing discussion that the council member and I and the team have had in a number of forums. And what I, what I want to make sure that the public understands and everyone understands is that, again, we are using multiple tools, and so just because something may not be...
And so, just because something may not be managed through the direct centralized CityStat process, doesn't mean that we aren't leveraging other tools. I talked to you about our robust performance planning process and the agency performance plans, and the regular check-ins that we're going to be doing around the agency performance plans. We also have the mayor's action plans. So, we have robust, I would say, measurement, right, and management of agency performance, and there are multiple ways that we are digging into agency performance. And again, I think CityStat is one core component and one core tool, but really, when we start talking about how we fix these issues, the issues are not fixed by CityStat. They are identified by a stat. The real issue that I think we are focusing on within the Office of Performance and Innovation and in the mayor's office is fixing some of these, fixing some of these issues. And again, it takes different forms. I've talked about the Agile Tiger Team approach, which is approach, an approach that I've brought that I'm excited about. We have our Transformation Management approach, which my predecessor brought into government. And so, again, Baltimore is known, right, for our work around CityStat, and it will forever, I think, be a part of this city and the management of this government. But, in the time that we've had a CityStat program, performance management has evolved, and we are evolving as a government in our use of best practices to solve complex issues. And that's exactly what I'm focused on in my office as city administrator, is making sure that we do stat, but then also making sure that we're using AI technology to solve some of these complex issues and city services challenge, right? I'm trying to bring the modern innovative tools into government to fix these issues, and I'm happy to talk more about the evolution of our CityStat program and additional stats that we plan on adding to our CityStat team, and we can talk about some of the ones that you're interested in.
And I'll close here. I agree with all that you've said.
We've had two members that haven't had a chance to ask a question.
I'll agree with all you've said, Madam CAO, and I think I'm more than willing to continue to have the conversation. I think we, somewhere we're missing each other in crossing signals, that's okay, but more than continued, willing to continue to have the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Chair of the Committee, Councilman Costello. Councilor Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this actually is kind of a follow-up to Councilman Conway's question. The performance plan measures, do we have an idea when those plans will be completed?
Yeah, so the first wave of plans for the first 16 agencies will be published late in the summer. And then, again, as I mentioned, there'll be another wave in February. So, we're sort of deliberately sequencing it so we can kind of get a pretty giant enterprise-wide initiative here underway and underway thoughtfully. But again, you'll be able to see this, that first wave in later this summer.
Will there be any additional input from the council on that first, on these two waves? So, my goal is to really understand, and I know, CAO Leach, we had talked about this on a few occasions, about the continuity of performance measures across the, across the agencies. And so, looking at particular quality-of-life issues, making sure that we have that documented in preparation for FY '25. And so, the, from a timeline perspective, I wanted to make sure that there is some sort of council input, and we have some sort of way to provide feedback to you all during that time.
Yes. No, I think, I think, I think we will need to work together on that, yes.
Okay, perfect. And so, from a, from the waves perspective, you said the end of September, and so, when would it, when would it come to the council?
I think we'll have to come back to you on like a sort of, a sort of engagement process, but the, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, I guess, get back to you on the sort of timeline for that.
Okay, perfect. I'm just making sure that, is it before September or is it after September?
The plans will be, you know, later in the summer, so I don't want to put a firm date on it, so that's when the actual plans would be published, so.
And so, that's my concern. And so, the actual plans are being published in late September, and the council needs to have input before the plans get published in late September, oh, I mean, I'm sorry, late summer. And so, you'll be able to come back with a timeline of when council will be able to input on these plans?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. VP Middleton?
Thank you. I, I guess to piggyback in another way with my last two colleagues. So, as you all know, that I've been a long-serving person with the Maryland Association of Counties, representing the executive board, and I was, along with one of my colleagues that is also alternate on that board, Councilwoman Ramos, we were just so elated last year when Baltimore City won the top innovation award for the, the program that will prevent firefighters from ever being killed like they were, that partnership that you, the fellow, the partnership that you had with Carnegie Mellon and creating, that there are some wonderful things that you are doing and every agency is doing in this city, and it's organizations like this that we pay, that the city pays dues to, and there, it's competition within, you know, the state, that there were other counties that put in for that award, and most of them submitted anywhere from five to eight different applications of different things in their county. And Baltimore City submitted that one thing and won that top award, and that was the first time that that has happened in, I want to say, at least 12 to 14 years. So, I know that there are good things happening, and being a representative on that, with that organization, I want to continue for you to be in those kind of competitions, so things that you are doing and inventing are highlighted. There's so many layers of different things, and that's not happening. So, I want to make sure I have a contact, and also, I'll keep City Administrator Faith Leach in the mix, because her predecessor really was the one that directed me to that I, that idea, and, you know, it kind of kicked off something. I was a little taken back because I wanted that award to go onto the National Association of Counties, but I guess if we don't get the push from people like your office and CAO Leach, that it's not going to happen. So, I'm going to be, I'm sure more information are going to be, it's going to come, like for our popular summer conference that's coming up. I just think this is a way that we can, it's a powerful way we can continue to highlight our city through things that you are definitely doing. It's important. It's important, because we get so much negativity that we need things like this to prove that we're doing things. So, please, please, when you get an email from me and me passing on those applications to apply, it's important that you do apply and participate, and it's a way, and I'm sure there's other organizations that, you know, our council belongs to, that has competitions that we need to really start honing in on highlighting all of the wonderful things that you do. And I just kind of wanted to make that statement. I don't know if you'd like to add a comment?
No, I agree, and thank you, unless the chief data officer has anything.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Slifer, who has a question.
Thank you. Dan, same question as last year. Can you tell us how, what you've done this year to innovate and save us over $1.5 million that you cost us?
Thank you, Councilman. So, I'm glad to talk about our work broadly. You know, in general, we're focused, especially with the performance work, but really across the board, on improvement of services, on holding agencies accountable for the quality and timeliness of service. We don't, at least, my office isn't really measuring its success in terms of cost savings. That, that's just not the mission of the office. So, that's never really, you know, been the way that we've thought about our work. We look at whether we are making the city cleaner, whether we are, you know, supporting efforts to reduce violence in the city. I mean, I, we, I will mention the late invoice payment process, which itself does, I mean, that does involve finance, but it's not, I wouldn't say the purpose of it is cost savings to the city as much as improving the performance and the timeliness of what the city is doing, though it has a sort of financial benefit. But again, that's just, that's not, that's not really what we do.
Yeah, I mean, just like last year, I'm looking for a little, you started getting towards an example, and I appreciate that. I want a little bit more than that, because, again, it's about performance and innovation, and there's a lot of places that, in the city, that we can innovate and certainly increase performance, increase the outputs, but when I look across the budget, I see, really across the board, you know, our key functions are, their budgets are ballooning, and I'm not putting this on you, I'm just saying that we're spending a lot more money for a lot less services, and I know you can't fix all that, no one person can, but I just want a few examples of something that you guys worked on this year, that you innovated, that you can say, "Look, because of the work that we did, this function is now performing better, and therefore, you're going to see it performing at a higher level, doing more."
Before you respond, looks like we have CAO Leach that would like to jump in.
Yeah. I should take a seat at the table at this point. So, I think, so I...
We have a seat open over here, if you'd like.
Oh. Well, the way the past four days have been going, we're symbiotic. I actually want to highlight Council Vice President Middleton, what she just highlighted, and I'll have our chief data officer actually talk about that partnership with Carnegie Mellon, and how we were able to use this AI technology following the Stricker Street fire, and how we now have that, that technology embedded within dispatch. So, when we send our firefighters out, they now know when there are vulnerable buildings before entering them. And so, while we can't necessarily quantify the impact of that new AI technology, what we can tell you is that we are, that our firefighters are now better, better able to respond to vacant homes, and this could potentially be some life-saving technology, and that was all through the Office of Performance and Innovation.
So, that's a perfect example, and that's exactly what I'm looking for, for those kind of examples, that if we can, like, that thing's a perfect example. Other things like that is really what I'm trying to understand a little better.
Absolutely.
And maybe the chief data officer wants to talk more about that example, but I have plenty more, if you'd like to hear them. They're just not specifically financial in nature, that's my...
Well, not necessarily just financial, like the thing that CAO just said, I mean, you can't put a price on, if that saves one life. Those are the kinds of things I like to see. You cost us $1.5 million, just want to know what we're getting. So, that's an example. If you can just tell us briefly just a few other examples.
Yeah, I can quickly follow up on the example that CAO Leach mentioned. In addition to, you know, the public safety aspect directly for our first responders, the Housing Department identified, based solely off the kind of initial predictions around that model, have torn down, I want to say, nearly 50 vacant buildings, so they identified another 50 vacant buildings since we've originally run that model for emergency demolition. So, there are 50, 50 vacancies, dangerous vacancies out there that no longer exist thanks to, thanks to that model. Maybe one other example I can cite is our Data Academy Program. This is, again, you know, Councilwoman Ramos, you were, you were asking around our, our kind of partnerships with Bloomberg. They helped us a great deal in developing the Baltimore Data Academy. That program has been really geared towards frontline workers, folks with no kind of data literacy or no educational opportunities to get into the world of data. We've had over 500 course enrollments and, across the first two courses that we launched, and about 200 course completions. And the way we, we are, at least, starting to see some of the fruits of that effort. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from, from the courses, but also folks saying things like, you know, "Now, now I understand why data entry tasks are so important, and getting clean data is so important. Now, I understand kind of the chain from, you know, I'm doing my day-to-day work, doing data entry, that sort of thing. I understand why it's so important to kind of enter the data properly, so that as it feeds up the food chain, and we are looking and trying to detect, as Councilman Conway alluded to, trying to detect issues, that that's dependent on good data, and that's, that's thanks to the Data Academy Program." So, that's another area of kind of innovation and kind of new programming that we've introduced.
And so, are they going to, are they, is that somehow getting rolled out to the agencies to apply that in what they're doing? Is that like something they are incorporating to 3-1-1 or some of the backend of that?
So, the, the program itself is available through Workday Learning, so all 14,000 city employees, it's available to everyone. So, it's, it's really dependent on, you know, themselves and managers making time for, you know, that little bit of investment. Each course is maybe four, four hours of investment, so it's available to everyone. And, yeah, we're, like I said, we're kind of seeing some initial payoff, and this is only launched in February, so it's only been a couple of months, and we're already seeing, you know, like I said, a couple of hundred course enrollments.
Okay, if I can make a request, if the administration would consider making that a mandatory training for all agency folks, not asking for a commitment, yes or no, now, just if that's something that can be considered and give an answer back to the council, at least to make it mandatory for the level of whatever employees you think it would benefit the most, because I don't think anybody's going to log in and do that unless they physically have to, just like people don't go in and take the cybersecurity training until BCIT emails you and tells you about to lock out your email if you don't take this training. So, same thing with this, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'd be happy, happy to consider that, and just to mention, you know, there's, you know, the courses that I mentioned, these initial two are around kind of foundations and data literacy, so what are data? How do they show up in your life? You know, when you log into a website and it asks for, you know, to accept all cookies, what, what is actually happening? What is, where's your data going? We've got a couple of other courses on the way, things like Data for Leadership, Leading with Data, how do you ask good questions, and how do you manage teams using data for performance? We have a specific performance management course that's going to kind of, you know, educate others, you know, again, this is available to everyone in the city, so more people can kind of learn about the value of performance management. So, there's more courses on the way. Obviously, the basic foundations one around data literacy, I think is the one we'd probably want to consider for, for making mandatory, but happy to, happy to say more.
Yeah, if you pilot that at DPW, I'll propose to double your budget next year, if you get them through that program.
Thank you, Councilman Slifer. Chair, we have eight minutes. Does anyone else have any other questions? I know we've been in order. Councilmember Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question. You guys mentioned that, right now, we rely on the agencies to do their own data analysis, and so, does, I see faces, maybe, maybe that's not right. So, who's doing the data analysis, then? Do agencies have someone doing data analysis internally?
Yes, so, again, it's, it's a variety of answers. So, yeah, we have concentrated data analysts and even data science kind of capabilities now here in the, in the mayor's office that can support kind of mayor priorities, our stat programs, that sort of thing. The Data Fellows Program, that was, it's our, was our explicit intention to get more data talent out into the agency so that they can do analysis themselves. There are always going to be kind of smaller agencies that just won't always have the budget to hire a full-time analyst themselves, so that's where the mayor's office or the Data Fellows Program can kind of supplement and help on, you know, one-off projects. We're going to be partnering with Office of Emergency Management for a little bit of data support there, for, for example. So, it's, again, a combination, and we want that kind of data expertise, you know, throughout, throughout the organization.
Very helpful. Music to my ears, I want to hear more of it. One of the big pushbacks against one of the bills that this body is considering was that one of the requirements, requirements would be that each agency designate a data person, and that that would come with like a $1.5 million cost. What you've just told me is that we already have people in each of these agencies or the capacity with our Data Fellows Program to do that.
We have the capacity for data analysis, but I can tell you, speaking with many of our data analysts across the...
but I can tell you, speaking with many of our data analysts across the organization, they, they are loaded up with tasks already. So, yeah, the skills might be there, but not necessarily the, the, the additional capacity that's needed to take on those additional tasks.
So in the agencies, who is responsible for making sure that the trains run on time? How do we know?
I mean, I think every agency is a little bit different in their organization, organization and, and structure. Like I said, we've, we've kind of provided support so that they've got some of the expertise there. But, you know, the, the structure is always different. The people asking questions are always different and.
I think the, the question here is quite simple. I think because what I propose is centralized, City Stat taking on some analysis responsibilities for key agencies, the big ones. You, you've told me thus far that these agencies already do a lot of that internally. My question was then, how do they do that? You're telling me there, there are data people in those agencies already? So they have some of that capacity already. So it, either it's happening in the agencies or it's not. Either they have the capacity and they're doing the analysis or they're not. Or we're doing it centrally or we're not. And it seems that it's either or, or we're not doing it.
Yeah, so I would offer that it's not either or, it's actually both. I think that we are building, as we've talked about, the data capacity of our agencies. So for example, when we talk about the Health Department, the Health Department actually has a robust data department and a data team because they have an epidemiologist, which obviously came in handy during the pandemic. And so they're tracking lots of data and trends and patterns in the Health Department, right? And we're trying to build that same data fluency within departments like the Department of Public Works or the Department of Transportation. And then the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, for example, so.
Does DPW have that ability now?
So within DPW, I, I believe that they, Justin.
Yeah, in fact, I think if you visit the City Jobs website right now, they have postings for, for data scientists and data analysts at DPW.
But they have someone who is looking at their 3-1-1 requests, their basic. Because, I mean, we, we talked about this a little bit for Backriver and like who's keeping track of how we're doing there to make sure we meet those permitted standards for affluent coming out of there. Like we, we do have data people within agencies, so.
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. So then that's not something that we have to worry about necessarily. For our major agencies, they do have some capacity internally and maybe not all the capacity they need, but some capacity internally to keep track of how things are going.
Yes, many of our agencies have data capacity. I think we're trying to grow that data capacity because it's limited, right? When we talk about like the equity officers, for example, is a somewhat equivalent position, right? That, that we are having to fund in agencies because we put in place a new, you know, equity policy. And so if we were to move in that direction, we would have to assess what our current capacity is in those agencies. Oftentimes, those folks are, one, tracking any number of issues, but they also might be preparing data for, you know, state and federal reporting, right? Like they currently have a job and a workload. And so if we were to add anything on top of that, we would have to look at potentially adding more capacity in those agencies.
That's good to know. Can, I'll make this an official committee request. Can you provide to me the top data person in each agency? That'd be really helpful. And that way we know who has the capacity, who doesn't have the capacity and more than happy to have a discussion about what additional capacity we may need.
Yeah, I think we probably need to have a conversation on how to kind of define that or identify that. But, yeah, happy to, happy to help on that, sure.
Sure.
Chair Costello?
It's off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan, just wanted to thank you for an outstanding career in city government. Appreciate everything you've done over the years. It's been a pleasure working with you and I'm glad you're not going to be that far away and still supporting the city in your efforts. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I don't see any additional questions. So it looks like we can, are you good? Okay, we can wrap up. Thank you again also as well. Thank you for your time and your service to the city of Baltimore. And best of luck with whatever's next for you. And thank you for your team. With that, we, well, I guess recess for one minute. And up next, we have the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs.